And we will start and we'll take them together. Items B1 and B2. And so with that, we have staff should be ready to give us a presentation.
Maureen Meredith, Housing and Planning Department. Item number B1 is NPA 2021-0021.01SH Parker Apartments. The property address is 2105 Parker Lane. It is located within the East Riverside Old Torf Combined Neighborhood Planning area. The request is to change the future land use map from civic to multifamily land use. It is recommended by staff. We did receive a letter in opposition from the East Riverside Old Torf Combined Neighborhood Plan Contact Team. And that's the end of my presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Kate Carr with the Housing and Planning Department, and I'm presenting item B2 on your agenda. This is case number C14-2021-008.sh Parker Apartments. This property is approximately 7.8 acres and is located on the east side of Parker Lane. It is currently zoned SF3 NP and is occupied by the Ward Memorial United Methodist Church. Adjacent to the north of this property is the tract zoned MF2 and to the east are tract zoned MF3 NGR. Adjacent to the south is the tract zoned SF3 NP. Across Parker Lane to the west are tract zoned MF3 MP, SF6 PO MP, and SF3 MP. The applicant is requesting MF4 MP to construct a multifamily development. Further zoning application, they are proposing to build 140-unit complex with onsite surface-level parking. This project has been certified as a smart housing project, and they're planning to dedicate 100% of the units to serve families at or below 60% MFI. Staff is recommending rezoning the site to MF3 MP. This property is long stretch of Parker Lane consisting of SF3, SF6, MF2, and MF3 base zoning districts. All of these have similar height restrictions between 35 and 40 feet and site development standard. Rezoning this property to MF4 MP would allow the buildings to be built up to 60 feet in height and be inconsistent with the existing zoning pattern on this portion of Parker Lane. A valid petition opposing this rezoning for this property has been filed and its current percentage is at 33.01%. The petition, a map of the petition area and associated property owners and signatures received date were included in your backup. This concludes my staff summary of the rezoning case, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Steph. And at this time, we're going to hear from the applicant, star six, to unmute. And you have six minutes for your presentation.
Hi, this is Walter Moreau. I'm the Executive Director of Foundation Communities. We are the applicant. Thank you for hearing our case tonight. We are really excited about the Parker Apartments. If you're not familiar with Foundation Communities, we have a great track record of affordable housing and services in Austin. We're homegrown, started here 35 years ago. We're a forever owner. We've never sold one of our communities. We have 23 communities, north, southeast, and west, about 7,000 residents, including Arbor Terrace, which is right around the corner from the Parker site. I think what we're really known for is that our properties are beautifully designed. They're well-managed. We have wait lists pretty much everywhere. And we provide tremendous onsite snack services, learning centers, education programs, health programs. The Parker site is eight acres, and what we've designed is 135 new affordable apartments. All of them will be affordable, 100%. Half of the apartments are at very deep rents, below 50% of the median rent, median family income rent. We've designed the property really for families with kids. 80% of the units are two and three-bedroom units, which is not like a normal conventional apartment. And I'm happy to share more details about the deep affordability and the unit mix. I want to highlight that we're keeping three and a half acres of green space. We're including a wildflower meadow out in front of the property. We're keeping the density low to allow green space for kids to enjoy. We're saving all the large trees on the site. And perhaps most importantly, 14 of the apartments will be set aside for parents and children that have been homeless. We have a great track record of this program. It's called our Children's Home Initiative. We work really closely with families from Safe and from Passages and from the Rathgaber Village and other programs to provide the kind of wraparound support services to help families succeed. We're also planning to completely replace the old and rundown church buildings, which are not really useful anymore, to build a new community learning center. The center will have offices for the Justice for Our Neighbors Immigration Program. We'll have our after-school program that works closely with Linder Elementary. I have to brag, we have 11 learning centers across town, and we have about 1,000 kids with a GPA of 3.4, which we're very proud of. The center will have a food pantry, space for fitness classes and other health programs. And we're talking with, we'll have space for partners like Meals on Wheels. And we're talking with Avante, Any Baby Can, and Mama Sana. And we're partnering with the church as well, the United Methodist Church for office space. This is an appropriate zoning site for multifamily. You've got multifamily on two sides already, a church to the south. Across Parker, you have the Heritage Oaks Park, as well as some single-family houses. It's an amazing location for families. It's still central, it's near transit, groceries, jobs. It's also an area that we all know is very quickly gentrifying, and we're losing affordability fast. Our proposal is absolutely consistent with so many city plans, like the Strategic Housing Blueprint, the Mobility Plan, the Climate Plan. The Neighborhood Plan is not consistent with these new city plans. We've got great supporters in the neighborhood. We remain willing to work with neighbors on things like use of the learning center and other amenities, addressing design concerns, working on traffic calming. But honestly, there are just some neighbors who are opposed to the project. No matter what, they just don't want anything to really be built on the land. They want to just keep it wide open. They want to keep the wildflowers. They're not interested in the community benefits that we're offering. The community benefits are huge. New, deeply affordable, well-designed family housing for 135 families, a new community learning center, 14 apartments for parents and children that have been homeless, with the support services that really help them thrive. Finally, if we're not approved, we will lose $15 million in federal funding that is already headed for approval. The council has already voted unanimously to support the project. Please recommend Parker to council for approval for all of these reasons. We're very happy to answer questions. Sabrina, Megan, and others on our team are available if you have specific questions. Thank you.
Okay, we have quite a few people speaking here. And I want to take, just because they have a time constraint. Is it Ian Librado Tennant? You're a one-minute speaker. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have a minute?
Hi, my name's Ian Tennant, and I'm a resident of the East Riverside Old Torf Community. Speaking today to express some support for Foundation Communities. I'm expressing my support for the project as both a neighborhood resident and community member, as well as a volunteer with Foundation Communities over the last seven years. I currently live at the Shammany Condos at Old Torf in Wickersham, where I also serve as a board member and treasurer for my homeowners association. As a volunteer tax preparer, financial coach, and money management instructor with Foundation Communities, I've witnessed firsthand the impact of their commitment to preserving affordability throughout the city. I can't speak highly enough about the benefits they provide to residents and how their thoughtful, compassionate, inclusive, and housing-first approach has created a sustained life stability for many of the folks that call their properties home. They also provide abundant wraparound services for the residents, including case management, adult education, financial stability programs where I volunteer, and learning centers for the children of residents. Learning centers are amazing and give kids a free opportunity for after-school programs and summer learning programs that create safety and enrichment for them at such a pivotal age. And for the city as a whole, the volunteer-run tax prep centers where I've spent many years volunteering are hubs of community and hope, where I've been able to meet many of my own neighbors and assist them with preparing and filing tax returns, something that is often a stressful process, that we find a lot of peace of mind and financial clarity in helping one another. It's, my time there has really shown me what it's, you know, what it is to be a part of a community. And it's no secret that we're in the midst of a rising action of an affordability crisis that's been developing in the city for many years now. It doesn't seem to show any signs of slowing.
Mr. Tennant, we've got to wrap it up. That's a minute. I need to move on to the next speaker. Sorry. So next, we have Sabrina Butler, followed by Lawrence Sunderland, and then Kevin Reed. You all each have three minutes. We have Sabrina Butler, star six, to unmute.
Hi, this is Sabrina Butler. I'm actually just here with the applicant for any questions, so I can skip my time and you can go on to the next speaker.
Thank you very much. So Lawrence Sunderland, followed by Kevin Reed, and then Megan Matthews after that.
Chair, if we can go back to Mr. Sunderland, he's just logging in now.
Oh, yeah, okay. So is, will, is Kevin Reed available?
Larry Sunderland.
Oh, Eric or Mr. Sunderland, are you?
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Okay, all right. Let's go and take this since you're there, and then followed by Kevin Reed.
Okay, good. My name is Larry Sunderland. I'm a member of the E Rock Contact Team and... Okay. I'm a member of the E Rock Contact Team and Friends of Riverside Neighborhood Association. Wait a minute. I've lived in the neighborhood. Okay, you got the first part. I've lived in the neighborhood over 20 years and been a part of every planning process. The Neighborhood Plan, Imagine Austin, the Riverside TOD. I strongly support the Methodist Church and Foundation Communities' vision for this land. Foundation Communities is already in our neighborhood doing their good work. The church has done great work here for decades. However, the city chooses to label this land, we have to acknowledge that this is really sacred ground. It is a fundamental component to the calling of the church and its mission. With Foundation Communities, it will not lose its foothold and influence in East Riverside and can continue to serve that mission for the betterment of this community. I can't think of a better way to allow both of them to live their values and benefit us in this neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have Mr. Reed, if you're on the line, followed by Megan Matthews.
Yes, thank you. My name is Kevin Reed, and I serve as the President of the Board of Trustees of the Rio Texas Conference of the United Methodist Church. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight in support of this application. The Board of Trustees is the owner of what was previously known as Ward Memorial United Methodist Church. Hopefully, you received earlier this week an email from Pastor Teresa Welborn, who's our district superintendent, who also expressed support for this project. Ward Memorial and its successor later Parker Lane United Methodist Church, as has already been expressed, has a very long history in southeast Austin. As well as being a traditional worship center, the church had a long history of mission work in the Austin community, was active in food delivery, clothing drive, services to the immigrant community. We're extraordinarily proud of this church's role in the community for so many years. Several years ago, we recognized that the church was in decline. The congregation was no longer able to maintain the building or to support a full-time pastor. And following a number of efforts to support the church, we made the very difficult task that it was time to close the site. Sadly, as many of you know, church membership has declined throughout the country, and we have more experience than we frankly wish to have closing churches and disposing of church property. We often place church property for sale and simply seek the best offer. We did not do that in this case. Very early on in this case, we made a decision that this site was different. We knew that if we sold this site, the Methodist Church would never again be able to afford a site in the southeast Austin area. We also decided that even without a traditional worship center, we wanted a continued presence in southeast Austin. And for those reasons, we decided to seek a lease with an entity that was willing to partner with us and willing to meet some sort of ongoing community need. We began to conduct a search. Over time, we were introduced to Foundation Communities. We spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the history, the experience, looking at Foundation Communities' facilities to assure ourselves, quite frankly, that these are people that we wanted to be associated with. And I can tell you today without any hesitation that we're excited to be associated with Foundation Communities. We're proud of the work that they're doing in Austin, and we look forward to really being a partner with them, hopefully not only on this site, but perhaps on other sites. The Foundation Communities lease will keep the ownership of the property actually with the, will with the church. It will allow the development of affordable housing on the site. It will give the church a permanent place on the site along with Foundation Communities for office space. It's our intent to use that church dedicated space in the future to continue to provide the community and neighborhood services that we provided historically in southeast Austin. As Walter already said, we hope to return our free legal immigration clinic, Justice for Our Neighbors, to the offices on the site. We've worked with Foundation Communities to be sure that space will be, continue to be available for Meals on Wheels, for after-school programs, and for other community services that have previously been available on the campus. It's important to us that we're not selling and leaving Parker Lane. We've specifically worked with Foundation Communities to make arrangements to continue the work that we started in southeast Austin at this location. But hopefully, to do that in brand-new, more efficient space made available to us by partnering with Foundation Communities.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much. We're at the end of your time. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So next, we have Megan Matthews, followed by Alicia Wong, and you each have three minutes. Star send mute. We have Megan Matthews, star six, to unmute.
Hi, this is Megan Matthews, Director of Design for Foundation Communities. Like Sabrina Butler, I'm really just here to help you answer any questions, so I'll keep this short.
Okay, let's go and move on to Alicia Wong. Are you available?
I'm Alicia.
Speak again.
My name is Alicia Wong. I am very happy to endorse Foundation Communities' role in this community. I live in Sierra Ridge. I've been a resident of Foundation Communities now for 16 years. And I am not even the oldest person here. I am about 50%, you know, modal of people who have come to live with Foundation Communities in these apartments and just simply don't want to leave. We found our permanent home, and I'm here to endorse it on the ground-floor level. As a single mom who was running away from an abusive relationship, I had to change careers. And as Walter says, they want to be the last owner of record, which is something that brought me to tears when I heard them speak. And I can give witness to the fact that all these wraparound services help not just low-income families, but families who are stressed either by disability, by divorce, by migration. And I can also endorse that in our community, we have a very large Muslim population. And Foundation Communities, I just walked home today, and we had a two-page typewritten letter telling us, hey, it's going to be Ramadan. This is the correct way to, this is what you can expect. This is a good way to salute. So I cannot tell you what a joy it is to come and live in a place that truly gives people a place where families can thrive. And it's families of any background, every background, but especially those who are stressed economically or stressed emotionally. And I can bear witness to many success stories of folks that have come from here, have gone on to Ann Richards, have gone on to UT, have gone on to win scholarships, get scholarships to, full ride scholarships to St. Ed's. And as a single mom, my main concern was the care of my daughter. How do I maintain a job while my daughter, you know, while I'm, my daughter's coming out of school and no one to supervise? And Foundation Communities does it. It provides free after-school daycare. And it's not just free, but it's worry-free after-school daycare. I still say hello to those people who wrapped my daughter up in a rainstorm and turned her into, in her words, "a burrito of love." We have truly become a community, and I cannot tell you what a benefit and what a blessing it will be for the Parker Apartments to have this kind of commitment, this kind of flexibility, and this kind of just sheer openness to do the right thing. I can wholeheartedly endorse Foundation Communities' mission and the way they carry out, they carry forth their mission. So if I could recruit you to the board when you are done, that would be a wonderful thing. And I thank you for your time.
All right. Next, we have David Hart, followed by Kelly, is it Puckett? And you each have three minutes.
My name is David Hart.
Okay.
Hello?
We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
My name is David Hart, and I'm here in support of the Parker Apartments Plan Amendment. I've been homeless in Austin for four and a half years. During this time, I was asked to become a member of the Community Care Board of Directors. As a board member for five years, I translated my life experiences as homeless into terms that other members could understand. I also became a member of the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council, where I was educated on healthcare issues unique to the homeless community. One of these issues was how finding permanent housing improves the health of those experiencing homelessness. During this time, I was fortunate enough to get income sufficient enough to qualify me for an apartment at Foundation Communities' property. My health issues could be addressed. I have been living at Arbor Terrace, a property just south of Old Torf on IH 35 Frontage Road, for over eight years. After transitioning off the Community Care Board, I was approached by Foundation Communities to perform essentially the same role on their board. I have been on the Foundation Communities' board for over three years. As a Foundation Communities' board member, I have toured many of our properties, and I've talked to many residents. Before COVID, we used to have open houses, where members of the community could learn more about our properties. My favorite part of these open houses was talking to members of that property's immediate neighborhood, who would often show up to express their support and answer questions about the neighborhood. I believe I have the credentials to tell you that there is value in returning the homeless to the community by placing them into affordable housing. The various programs that Foundation Communities has developed over the past 25 years bear this out. The Parker Lane property will return families to this neighborhood. They will strengthen this neighborhood. They will be good neighbors, just like at all of our other properties. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, and I believe this is the last speaker, and this will be the last three-minute slot as well, Tim Thomas, are you there? Star six, to unmute.
Chair, did we skip Kelly Puckett?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
My name is...
Is there a Mr. Puckett there?
I am.
Yes, I apologize. You have three minutes, and then followed by Tim Thomas.
My name is Kelly Puckett. I live at 1802 Cedar Ridge Drive. Have lived here for 35 years. Now Cedar Ridge Drive runs parallel to Parker Lane. It's the next street east of Parker. The neighborhood is definitely a mixed-use neighborhood. I've often called it transitional or blended. There are single-family homes, but there are also duplexes, condos, apartments, large apartment complexes, small ones. My wife and I walked over to this property a couple of weeks ago and looked around to try and imagine what it would look like with the Foundation Communities' property on it. And I have to tell you, pardon me, that I looked around and it looked like a perfect fit for me. Directly south of the property is the Mormon Church, and directly south of that is Pete Terry's Hamburger Joint. Across the street from those two is the Hillside Creek Apartments. That's also an eight-acre development, but it has almost twice the density of the property that Foundation Communities is planning. So it's definitely not a high-density project. It's a beautiful piece of land, a lot of old oaks. Foundation Communities is well-known for being ecologically sensitive when they build, and I appreciate that. In addition, they are totally professional about the way they run their properties. I know that it'll be well-managed. I welcome new neighbors. I look forward to them building this, and I'm totally good with it. I'm speaking as a neighbor, as someone who lives in this area. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, I think we're ready to hear from Tim Thomas. And by my count, we're still within, last speaker at three minutes. So star six, to unmute. Have a Tim Thomas? Star six, to unmute. Well, what I think I'll do is we'll go ahead and move into those opposed, and then... Oh, okay. I get a message he's on. So Mr. Thomas, if you're there, please, star six, to unmute. All right, I don't know, Steph, Mr. Rivera, we're not getting any, we can't hear anybody on the line.
Chair, Commissioner weighs on Andrew Rivera. I'm going to have Mr. Thomas Dahlback in if we can proceed to the opposition.
Okay, thank you. So in the, we'll go ahead, as I said earlier, we have a primary opponent. And based on my list, that's Malcolm Yates. We'll have six minutes. And then followed by the remainder of the speakers I have listed will get three minutes each. So is there a Malcolm Yates there? Star six, to unmute. And we're looking at, is this your presentation?
Yes, do you have the presentation up, please?
Yes, I'm seeing the presentation with the, showing the property kind of highlighted in yellow.
Right, that's slide number one. So my name is Malcolm Yates. I am the Chair of the East Riverside Old Thorf Combined Neighborhood Planning Area Contact Team. Slide two, please. The EROC contact team voted to oppose this plan amendment because the community would like to see this property keep the civic zoning and to be maintained as a community center. The EROC area has more affordable housing than any other area of Austin. What this area lacks is the properties with civic use. One of the top goals of the EROC plan is to maintain a balanced mix of land uses. There are currently only 26 acres of civic zone property in the 745 acres of the Riverside NPA, and there is no community center in the entire EROC area. Slide three, please. This church operated as a community center for many years because the city did not provide any facility for the thousands of low-income residents in this area. These are some of the community services that were hosted at this property. Slide four, please. The current buildings on this site consist of a sanctuary that can be used for large meetings, offices for community service organizations, a gym with a basketball court and a full commercial kitchen, and a residence that can also be used as offices. There is a large amount of open space for more recreational activities. Slide five, please. The nearest recreational center and community center are located on Montopolus Drive, over two miles from the East Riverside area that would be served by this community center. Slide six, please. The Riverside Togetherness Project is a federal grant that targets the highest crime area in Austin. This area consists of the low-income apartment complexes in the East Riverside area that would be served by this community center. Slide seven, please. This is a map of the units, affordable units, that are currently available in the 78741 zip code. As you can see, there is a lot of them. Slide eight, please. Within 2,000 feet of the church property, there are already four subsidized apartment complexes, with a fifth complex being built on Old Thorf at Willow Creek. Slide nine, please. The EROC contact team and community ask that this property continue to be zoned as civic use. This will give the EROC community the opportunity to work with the church and the city to provide a badly-needed service to the low-income residents of this area. The issue for the residents of this area is not that there will be another affordable housing complex. We have always had plenty of them in this area. As a matter of fact, we used to have more. The issue is that we will lose the last chance for a ready-made community center in this area. There are no other suitable properties available in the EROC area. This is the reason for our opposition. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm going to do here is I'm going to go ahead and allow Mr. Thomas, I've been told he's available now, to go ahead and present. And then we'll get back into those opposed. So this is, Mr. Thomas is the last speaker for, are you there?
Hi, my name is Tim Thomas.
Thank you, sorry. Yes, yes, you have three minutes.
My name is Tim Thomas. I've lived in the East Riverside area for more than 15 years as both a renter and a homeowner. Right before we got married, my wife and I actually lived in the apartments now called Tollgate condominiums to back up the UMC church site. My daughter attends Travis High School, and my son is at Lively Middle School. In the before times, I committed to, committed to work across the river by bike and transit, and will be doing so again when the office reopens. I'm also somewhat unrelated, but a missionary kid whose parents went on two missions with the United Methodist Church. I used to be a member of the East Riverside Old Thorf Combined Contact Team, but I quit. It became apparent to me that the neighborhood planning process does not represent the people living in the neighborhood, and has helped create a massive affordability crisis and the dependency on cars. Even if they did a decade ago, the flum and neighborhood plan do not represent the needs of the neighborhood and enshrine inequality and fossil fuel dependence. My home also backs up to a church on Burlison Road, which, to counteract what Malcolm just said, there are other properties that could be used for civic uses in the area. And I'm in exactly the same situation as the homeowners on Parker, and I'm hoping that someday a development like this could replace the church behind me. All the schools that this development will feed into are under-enrolled and need kids. These schools have gone from the most over-enrolled in Austin to under-enrolled in just about seven years. We need these kids in our neighborhood. My kids attend these schools, and my wife is on the PTA at Travis High School. They have the resources and the experience to serve kids of all income levels. Another neighbor sent me this email. I don't understand the objection to Foundation Communities' request. I've worked as a volunteer with the organization, and I'm familiar with all the extras they bring with them to their projects. They would be the best neighbors anyone could want. We need more of their projects, not less. I agree, and urge you to recommend the construction of this affordable housing that takes climate change seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So now we're going to resume back into the speakers opposed. And the next on my list is Eddie McKenna, and followed by Frederick DeWerk, DeWerkin. Star six, unmute. Do we have Mr. McKenna?
Chair, Commissioner weighs on Andrew Rivera. I see Mr. McKenna, star six is not working. Mr. McKenna, please call back in if we could move to Mr. DeWerkin.
Okay.
Hello, this is Mr. McKenna, star six.
Oh, okay, this is Mr. McKenna. We'll go ahead and take you since you are present.
Thank you. Do I have one minute?
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes, okay, thank you. I appreciate the time of everybody present. I am calling in opposition. I wanted to raise a couple of points with a lot of respect to what has been said before. Starting with, I really like Foundation Communities. I like what it's all about. I'm very supportive of its mission and its efforts and its impact. So I hope that that can be considered for the record, and the testimony or the feedback from some of the other people in favor. I respect what they're saying as well. And I wanted to raise a couple of points in opposition despite that. And I'll try to get right to the point here, pardon me. This is my first time giving testimony in such an environment. My understanding is that this is really just a matter of a rezoning proposal. So I wanted to speak less so, or possible, to the specific merits of what would be constructed, and more to the proposal of rezoning. My first point against is that East Riverside, the East Old Thorf, and the entirety of Southeast Austin have very high-density multifamily zoning already. And historically, as has been suggested before, this includes some of the most affordable housing options in the entirety of the Austin urban core. The only reason that cost has gone up is not a matter of zoning. It's because of, you know, local or absentee property owners. I would suggest, and I think it has been suggested before, that addressing the need for public housing or social housing or the equivalent of what Foundation Communities suggests could be accomplished by taking over and fixing up existing apartment complexes, or old hotels and motels. And I believe that's already part of the city's plan, and I support it. My counterproposal, which I'm sure I'm not expressing correctly, would be as the other opposition has suggested, is to use this site to provide equally valuable civic services. This should not require a zoning change. This should just require redoubled commitments to support things like open fields, gymnasium, commercial kitchen, a food pantry, emergency homeless shelters, clothing assistance, recreation, polling place, things of that nature that are oriented overt toward low-income, high-needs, and homeless Austinites, possibly at a low cost. And then thirdly, I wanted to just propose that distributing low-income housing equitably across Austin would be a better idea. The city's own studies and its own advocacy suggest that this should be mainly focused on areas west of IH 35, not east. And this is true with respect to questions of race and ethnicity, average household income, any number of urban planning and density studies themselves. And so I guess I would suggest that before reaching a decision on this proposed change in zoning, I would respectfully request that everyone consider more information about a complete map of these sorts of proposed changes in subsidized housing construction all over town, not just in our space, would illustrate the commitment to this sort of equity plan in action. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, if Frederick DeWerkin is there, you've got three minutes. Star six, unmute.
Mr. DeWerkin, if you'll select star six again, perfect, proceed.
Council members and fellow Austinites, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. My name is Frederick DeWerkin. I live at 2004 Parker Lane in front of the church, and I grew up in an at-risk home. I lived in Panama, I also lived in Panama as a Peace Corps volunteer, and I organized a valid petition against the zoning change because I recognize an underserved community in my neighborhood, and I felt compelled to take a stand. Thirty-three percent of the neighbors within 200 feet have signed this valid petition, and it was not mentioned earlier. It's a very important point. Seventy neighbors outside of that zone have also signed against this zoning change. Please consider this. The area between IH 35 and Pleasant Valley, south of Riverside, is solidly multifamily and extremely dense, with no parkland, no community center, and little in the way of civic infrastructure. There are likely hundreds of families, many Latino and immigrants, with childrens who have no place to play. The green spaces are north to Guerrero or south to Maple Davis, and there are no rec centers. The reason I feel so passionate about this is from my upbringing in Amarillo as a son to a single mother who fled an abusive relationship. The one thing that got me through that time was the tiny rec center that I had five minutes walking away where I could pass my time while my mother worked one of her two jobs. My observations of this neighborhood are the following. The wildflower field was tended by hand but with a scythe by the pastor's husband when we moved in. There's great-horned owls in those trees and coyotes that traverse the property. In 2018, the church ceased to function, and I watched as the pastor was evicted in late-stage cancer. I began making calls and emails to the Methodist superintendency that were not returned around the 2018 period, and continued those through just recently, 2020. None of them were returned. I would love to speak with you, Mr. Reed and Mrs. Welburn. The community would love to speak with you as well, to talk about our appropriate use for this property. And then I was appalled that the wildflower was used as a parking lot for the filming of The Walking Dead last year in 2020, early in the pandemic. The notice to rezon arrived to us in 2021, and I'm told that the EROC and other churches have actually reached out and received no response, just like mine. This property is listed as civic in the future land use map, and was designated for greater community benefit, which is so important given the lack of civic infrastructure in this immediate area. Those of you who have grown up in Texas like I have understand that many of our communities have a very demarcated dividing line between the haves and the have-nots. We're in 2021. Who decides? Does the Methodist Church decide? Does Foundation's community decide? Does the neighborhood decide? I submit that the power to decide lies with your honorable commission, and I respectfully request that you aid this community in coming to the right decision by denying this upzoning request and compelling the current landowner to explore uses consistent with its current fully civic designation so that it may provide an outsized positive impact on this historically neglected and underserved community. If not us, then who? Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you very much. And next I have Mark Gibson, followed by Anna Aguirre, and each have three minutes. Star six, unmute.
Hello, my name is Mark Gibson, and I'm a resident of the neighborhood. While I'm a proponent of Foundation Communities and the work they do, I don't believe this project will have an impact on affordable housing in our area or greater Austin. Additionally, it will exacerbate the issues we already have, which is lack of sufficient, safe infrastructure, food scarcity, and significant density. According to the City of Austin Comprehensive Housing Market Analysis commissioned for the city in 2020 and conducted by an independent third party in our zip code 78741, there are over 52,000 residents, of which 85% rent their homes or apartments, which coincides with the fact that 83% of the housing structures in the zip code are multifamily. According to the same study, the median rent for the zip code is $1,002, only $102 more than the average rent Foundation community is planning on charging, according to the meeting that we had. Adding 135 units to the 19,400 multifamily units we currently have in the zip code at a price differential of $102 to today's median rent will have a less than a 70-cent difference on the average rent prices for our area. For comparison, using the same math, this same unit economics in 78735 west of town could have 20 times that impact, an area that is lacking in affordable multifamily housing. To further that point, a quick search on Apartments.com today showed that in our zip code, there are just shy of 300 apartments currently available for less than or equal to $900, the average rent plan for this community, meaning there's a chance that it would have little to no impact in our area because units are readily available at this price point, driven primarily by the prevalence of income-restricted units we currently have in our zip code. Compare the 300 number of available units in our zip code to zero apartments in 78735, 26 in 78704, 2 in 78702, 7 in 78759 north of town, and so on, that are available today for less than $900 a month. Maybe something that Foundation Communities consider is charging an average of $150 per month and fundraise the additional shortfall annually to subsidize the rent. This would have an 8X more impact in our area on affordable housing than their original plan using the same math as above, given that we are already in an affordable neighborhood from a rental perspective. Regarding safe infrastructure, the Old Thorf and Parker intersection, the intersection closest to the property is the 14th most dangerous in Austin. It is terribly tricky to navigate with the Pete Terry's drive-through and the traffic that is constantly backed up on Old Thorf. With that said, if the average Foundation Communities resident uses public transportation, we are asking them to cross the 14th most dangerous intersection to get to the nearest bus stop, or worse, traverse the 1.3 miles, pass the intersection, across IH 35 to get to the nearest grocery store, the HEB on Congress and Old Thorf. But that's not usually what happens. After a loan day, groceries are bought at convenience stores at a higher price, which effectively raises rents above the $900 average if all costs for the location are factored in. Lastly, regarding impacts, the Foundation Communities team stated at our last meeting that the Learning Center, the only real community-facing element of the project, would be able to service their residents and only 12 to 13 additional children. There are 19,400 other apartments that currently reside in our zip code, many with kids that are desperately in need for community services. To conclude, the city needs impactful affordable housing. This area does not lack for multifamily income-restricted units. This area lacks affordable single-family units, which have increased around 25% in our zip code over the last two years, according to Zillow. If we change the zoning, we remove the community's ability to partner with local companies like Icon that are endeavoring to change the affordability of single-family housing in the community. With the lack of perceived benefit to the community, I do not believe this project is worth giving up eight of our 26 precious acres zoned civic in the Riverside Planning Area. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your role in this important decision.
Thank you very much. And so the final speaker with three minutes is Anna Aguirre. If you're there, star six, unmute.
Hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Chair Shaw and Commissioners. My name is Anna Aguirre, and I'm the immediate best chair of the Southeast Combined Neighborhood Plan Contact Team. Our contact team met yesterday evening with the representatives from the East Riverside Old Thorf Combined Contact Team, which is immediately located north of- which is immediately located north of us, to discuss the proposed changes pertaining to this property. With a quorum present and based on the information provided and compared shared concerns with each with other residents who also live east of I-35, the contact team membership voted unanimously not to support the proposed changes. We ourselves are familiar with Foundation communities and have supported them as one of their affordable housing units is located within our area. We have worked with Mr. Moreau in the past by opposing an attempt by another developer to build an adult-oriented business in close proximity to these units as Foundation communities was also operating a childcare program. In this situation, we respectfully ask that this commission needs to look very closely at whether affordable housing density at this location on Parker Lane would violate the Federal Fair Housing Act before considering for approval the requested zoning change. As residents of East Austin, we already have a higher level of concentrated affordable housing developments. Unfortunately, this has come at a cost where we don't get the needed infrastructure to help residents in our vulnerable communities. In this case, increasing density while at the same time removing continued access to critical civic land use options will exacerbate a social injustice that residents in East Austin continue to be subjected to. The COVID-19 pandemic has glaringly exposed how much more vulnerable we are in East Austin. For example, from a medical perspective, we don't have the infrastructure needed such as pharmacies and medical clinics. Winter Storm Yuri magnified the vulnerability even more. In response to this, most recent catastrophic storm, members from our community spoke before the city council last week in support of item 28, a resolution that focuses on establishing resiliency hubs in response to weather-related disasters. The resolution was passed unanimously. If the civic use is removed from Parker Lane, the residents in this community will not have the opportunity to consider establishing a resiliency hub within their immediate area, therefore not have access to basic emergency services such as food, water, or shelter during a disaster, much less continued services needed to create a complete community. This area is already densely populated, and so many more people would be compromised. We recognize there is a need for affordable housing, but it should not come at the expense of the lives of those of us who live in East Austin. Social service programs, especially in the event of a catastrophic disaster, should be in close proximity and easily available to all residents regardless of where they live. We respectfully request the planning commission carefully consider the long-term and overall impact such changes would have on the current and future residents of East Austin and not approve the neighborhood plan amendment and zoning change request. Thank you for your consideration and for your service.
Thank you very much. So I think we've gotten through all our speakers at this point, and but we're going to give a applicant rebuttal to close things out. And so would that be Mr. Moreau? Mr. Walter Moreau, star six, unmute. You have three minutes for a rebuttal, or somebody on your team.
Thank you, yeah, this is Walter. I guess in rebuttal, I'm surprised at all the services that the neighbors want, food pantry, health programs, immigration services, children's education programs. That's exactly what we do at all of our learning centers. So we're really preserving the civic use of the Parker Lane site. Those current church buildings are in horrible condition. They would have to be completely remodeled and really probably torn down to have a future use because of the mechanical systems, the roof, and structural issues. We've got lined up $15 million in federal funding to build a brand-new community learning center and the long-run funding for the staff and for the programs to really make a difference. To address the affordable housing question, this area is losing affordable housing fast. Much of what is left, sort of naturally occurring affordable housing, is frankly run down and very bad shape, which is why it's so cheap. We are willing to keep working with residents to address real concerns, traffic calming, getting a playground in the park. We are committed to be a great neighbor, no matter what, and we hope that you'll move forward with this plan amendment and zoning to build some really awesome affordable housing and a community learning center that people want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes our public hearing. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing? And okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Schneidler. Let's go ahead and vote to close the public hearing. And I see all unanimous on that. And so now we move into our Q and A. Who has the first question for staff or those in favor or opposed? Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Chairman Shaw. I just want to clarify with Mr. Moreau and follow up on his comment about the services and clarification. So those services would be available to anyone, is that correct? Or is it only for the people who will be living in the apartments?
Yeah, we, all of our programs are free and available to the neighborhood, all of our learning centers. We pay a lot of attention to resident needs, so if there's interest in zumba classes or walking clubs. But some of our learning centers serve kids that are half surrounding the area and half our residents. We don't want to, if kids are walking home from Lindron Elementary and friends want to come to the learning center, they're absolutely welcome.
Great, thank you. And one other question, I think this might be for you, Mr. Moreau, as well. If we approve the zoning change, and if for some reason the funding doesn't go through, the project doesn't get built, what kind of protections are y'all providing that the affordable housing will happen, no matter what? If we do pass this zoning?
Our funding is very certain at this point, but I understand the concern. If, and we're open to some kind of overlay that would be in place so that the zoning is only approved for affordable housing or 135 units, that is acceptable to us.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I saw Commissioner Cox, I think, have his hand up next.
Yeah, one question for staff. The flume says civic use, but am I understanding correctly that the tract is actually SF3 zones? So if that's the case, did the church decide to just develop this as SF3 residences whenever they wanted without any sort of approval from Commissioner Council?
This is Maureen Meredith, Housing and Planning Department. Yes, so the civic land use does not provide any development entitlements. So yes, the zoning of SF3, they could develop it as any SF3 development regardless of what the future land use map says.
Okay, and then I have a question for the representative from the church, if he's still on the line. I was happy to see that the Foundation Communities Proposal included office space for continued, I guess, some sort of functioning of the Methodist church there. Is Foundation communities also granting the church use of their other community facilities other than just the office space in case the church wanted to start offering services, whether it's worship or otherwise, that they used to provide to the community that they no longer provide?
This is Walter Moreau. I don't know if Kevin Reed is still on the call. I'm not sure I completely understood the question. We do work with volunteers from United Methodist Community at other locations, and we don't currently have offices for their J-Fon, the Justice for Our Neighbors Program. That's been off at the church in the past, where they had to close the buildings down.
Is it, so I guess my question for you would be, is there some sort of agreement or part of your lease arrangement that the church could use your community spaces if they wanted to restart some of the services that they provided before?
Yes, and that's baked into our, part of our negotiation with the church for the ground lease was that they wanted to make sure that we were providing the food pantry and the after-school program and that their volunteers could help and be part of that. And we were like, wow, that's great, because that's exactly what we do.
Well, that's great, I'm glad to hear that. And my last question, last question for you is, the park across the street, I've taken a look at it, and it's an absolutely gorgeous park. I think it's an immense asset to the neighborhood, but it does seem a little bit underdeveloped as a recreational space. And so I'm wondering if y'all would be willing, as part of your site plan process and going through that, to maybe work with PARD on helping to improve that park as not only an asset for your residents, but an asset for the rest of the neighborhood?
We are happy to work with the neighborhood and PARD and try and be what people want in terms of playground or other kinds of things in the Heritage Oaks Park. I don't know how that gets tied exactly to our site permit, but you know, I guess I would say we're local. We have built 23 communities and followed through with commitments to the neighborhood and over decades, so we're not going anywhere, and we're absolutely committed to neighbors and putting in amenities like that and traffic calming options on Parker.
Great, thank you.
Okay, let's see, I've got Commissioner Schneider, followed by Commissioner Muschall.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is for Mr. Moreau. I just want to get a little more clarity on the space that may be available to the public. I don't know that you necessarily have, you know, sort of something near a final design plan, probably not. But in addition to the Learning Center, is there, I heard some things like, well, the church space might have allowed a voting location, or there was a space for maybe community meetings, recovery meetings, or something like that. Is there going to be a meeting space? And how large do you envision that being? What sort of access do you give to neighbors for access to these sorts of spaces in your other facilities? If you could just maybe talk in a little more detail about that, please.
Sure. We provide, we have a number of neighborhood groups that meet at some of our properties, particularly in Cardinal Point and the Four Points neighborhood, and at Blue Bonnet Studios, the South Lamar Neighborhood Association meets there. And we're happy to make the Learning Center open for neighborhood groups to meet. We'll have large meeting spaces. We typically have a handful of classrooms surrounded by a main gathering area. It'll be over 5,000 square feet. Actually provide more space than the current church buildings could offer in a more efficient design. They're not fully public buildings. You know, we do want to maintain security and maintenance and make sure the properties are, we are coordinating when there's different groups coming in. The Learning Centers are really the heart of our communities. They're open from early in the morning till late at night with English second language classes and the food pantry and the computer center. And they're just, they're vibrant community buildings, not just for our residents, but for the whole neighborhood.
Also, I think you had requested MF4, and staff is recommending MF3. What does the difference in those zoning designations mean in terms of what you would plan to build? How much of a problem does that cause for you from what you're proposing?
Yeah, I may have to defer to our civil engineer. MF4 gives us a little more flexibility without, you know, necessitating that we have affordability unlocked. And that is our preference still, is to have the flexibility of MF4. I think that we, MF3 with affordability unlocked, still works as well. And we can work through some of those details perhaps as we go towards council.
And maybe, is the engineering person still on to, if there's anything else to add?
I don't know if Connor is available or Megan wants to answer.
Hi Commissioners, this is Connor Kenny, are you hearing me?
Who?
Yes, we hear you, Connor. Hey, it's been a while. Hi, guys. Yeah, the principal difference between MF4 and MF3 is height and impervious cover. Our calculations at this point is that the project would be possible under MF3 with affordability unlocked because it essentially gets you up to the same height that MF4 allows. So take that knowledge for what you will. The plant development will be under 60 feet, so it would be accommodatable under either MF4 or MF3 with affordability unlocked. And as well, the impervious cover under MF3 is not a problem. And I believe there's not much in the way of differences between uses, but that's also fairly irrelevant because it's, you know, it's just a multifamily with the food pantry and school uses. A straight MF4 zoning would, you know, respect the compatibility setbacks required under code. But even if affordability unlocked was utilized, the current conceptual plans don't encroach upon those regular setbacks of compatibility in any case.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Okay, Commissioners with, I think, oh yes, Commissioner Muschall, you're next.
Thank you. I'm following up on the introduction a little bit. I live on the west side, and I am familiar with the Cardinal Point project. And we do have these coming to the west side, and I would like to see more of them. This is the exact kind of project that I think we need to see more of. This is a firm commitment on specific kinds of housing needs for families with the wraparound services that we need to be offering to make these programs successful. So while there have been certain programs in Austin that I am not in favor of, this is the kind of program I'm in favor of, and you would find me friendly for this kind of thing on the west side. That being said, you answered my other question, already got answered about, could it go to MF3 and still be doable for you guys in what you're trying to achieve? Because it does seem like that is probably a little bit more in line with what's existing with the neighborhood. I have a quick question for staff, and then I have a couple of other questions for the folks who've been presenting. For the staff, somebody on the opposing side mentioned a possible violation to the federal fair housing. Is there any merit to that? Do we need to be aware of anything there? I didn't quite catch the substance of that, and just want to make sure that if we're leaning, you know, if the commission decides to approve the project, we're not setting up for a problem there. So that's a staff question.
Commissioner, this is Kate Clark with the Housing and Planning. I am, I'm sorry, I am not familiar with the federal requirements or setup that are done for affordable housing, so I don't have an answer for you for that.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure specifically what the opposing viewpoint was referencing there, but I just want to make sure we don't set up for a problem for the project or the council or, you know, that kind of thing. So in being respectful to the neighborhood and what the comments I reviewed prior to the meeting that had been submitted in advance to us, Mr. Moreau, these are probably going to come back to you or one of your representatives. Some of the comments that came back, apparently a lot of people really do like and appreciate that wildflower meadow. And in your initial presentation to us, you mentioned that and said that the idea would be to keep that. So I wanted to see if you would expand on that. Just as a point, in looking at some of the other projects that we might be getting to this evening or in future meetings, I am appreciative of how much inclusive information was provided on this one in advance in terms of the site plan. There's another project I asked questions about, and every single answer I got back was, will be deferred, will be deferred, will be deferred. So one of my questions coming in- be deferred. So one of my questions coming into the commission is how do we make an informed decision if we don't have all the information? So I appreciate the extensive information that's being presented to the commission here on the intent of this project and how you guys laid out. So question on the wildflower meadow and if that's going to be in. And then the second thing that the neighborhood brought up that I think is worth consideration is the traffic calming. Um, I did used to rent over there at one point in my lifetime also, so I am familiar with the area and the challenges in that area. And as Austin grows, it's going to be all of our challenges in the, the mobility plan and stuff. While it's all coming, it's not there now and presumably your project would be up and running before all that comes. So I'm curious to see if you could address those two. And, um, thank you. I'm really excited about what, what you guys have put together.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, we have kept in our preliminary site plan, um, substantial green space in front of the property along Parker Lane that we want to plant in a natural way and mean to, and love the wildflowers. So, um, our intent and design right now is to have a big area there that's planted with wildflowers. I don't know the answers to traffic calming on Parker, but if there are the, uh, traffic pillows, stop, another stop sign, another street light, um, there may be things that could be added with proper traffic engineering and we'd be all in to work with the neighborhood to come up with solutions that we can get in place.
The, you know, the other thing on that is, I, I, it sounded like in some of the opposition from the neighbor, the neighbors that spoke and some of the things we got was a concern about traffic and the number of trips. We've gotten into this in our neighborhood with a, with a development that was going to come in our area. Um, I, it sounded like in the, in the stuff they talked about, some of the backup of the traffic, being able to get out of these areas safely and that kind of thing. But what you guys are proposing are family units. And so I wonder if, if the neighborhood is aware that that kind of changes, uh, what kind of traffic, you know, how many commuters you have and things like that, when you're talking about specifically catering to, uh, families versus a bunch of small apartments where each person is coming and going with a vehicle and that kind of thing. And so there might need to be more dialogue with the, with the community so that they understand what, what you guys are offering.
So, um, Commissioner Muschall, we're out of time on your questions. Um, I'm, okay, I'm recognizing Commissioner Azar. Um, do you have a question?
Chair, Commissioner Braxton's went before me.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, um, you're way over, you're on my far right. I'm sorry. Commissioner, Commissioner Braxton, please, uh, your question?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so my question for Mr. Moreau is, um, I actually, I live in that area. I'm very familiar with it. I definitely believe we need more and more affordable housing in that area. I'm constantly hearing from folks who can't afford to live there, even though, um, you know, I know there's this impression that it's one of the most affordable places in Austin. It's not really affordable for the people, or at least a lot of the renters that live there. Um, so, um, my question is, what would the rent, the range of rent be for folks, um, at this, at this property? Um, and I know you said that there's a commitment to have some families that are transitioning from being unhoused. Um, are there things that could be done to somehow, um, increase that number? Because I know we have a lot of unhoused folks, um, in our neighborhood.
Thanks. I'm thinking to, um, I can answer a part of that question and I, I think Sabrina Butler on our team has the actual exact rent, um, or rent ranges. But 10% of the apartments are being designed and set aside for families that have, parents and kids that have been unhoused. That's generally been our model is to have 10% of the apartments in that program. And we, this year had over a 94% success rate of families graduating at the end of 18 to 24 months. The way the program works is the family doesn't have to move. They can stay in their apartment and transition in place. Uh, kids go to the same school and then we rotate the next available unit into the program. So we're, we're not, um, inclined to necessarily increase the percentage upfront. We'd have to find the funding for that as well, but maybe there's a way to get from 10 to 15%. Half the apartments are below the 50% rent cap. Um, and if Sabrina's on the line, she can maybe have the rent ranges handy. I don't want to quote them wrong.
Hi, this is Sabrina. I'm pulling them up right now. I'm sorry, my computer just went down as you were asking that question. Um, I did want to note that, uh, there was some late backup. I believe it was posted on the, um, planning, uh, commission, um, page. That includes a flyer that Walter Moreau sent out, uh, to the planning commission, um, last week, and it does include a full rent schedule. And I just pulled it up. So it, it depends on, um, the combination of MFI, uh, income mix and then bedroom size. So it's a huge range. Um, but the lowest rent for a one-bedroom 30% unit would be $549 expected. This is not exactly fixed yet, um, but expected to be roughly $549. And the largest for a 60% three-bedroom would be, uh, $1,520. Um, and this is, um, these are all, I, I will note, um, we typically design to reasonably large, um, unit sizes. So I was looking at some of the comparable units in the neighborhood and our, um, one and two-bedroom units are all, um, significantly larger than what I saw on the, the market nearby.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Thank you. Um, and can I ask an additional question? Is that kosher now? Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're still, you're still in your time.
Okay, great. Um, so I guess this would be for staff. Um, what kind of additional requirements, um, this is a total newbie question. What kind of additional requirements can we have of, um, foundation communities when it comes to things like disaster relief plans? And the reason I'm bringing this up is that, um, two of the affordable communities that were mentioned, Douglas Landing and Rosemont that are very close, um, I'm in touch with a lot of the folks who live there and with the winter storm, many people lost their housing with flooding. Um, and so one of those properties that is actually Douglas Landing vacating all of the tenants, um, gave them almost no notice. Um, it's the Sandalwood Management Company, if anyone's interested. They're doing that at two properties in the Austin area. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's supposed to be an affordable community. Um, I understand they have nothing to do with foundation communities. Um, but, and then another one of the properties didn't give folks a chance to terminate their leases, expected them to continue to pay rent for units that were uninhabitable, lot of issues there, and the tenants there just won a tenant board. So I bring all of this up because I think it would be amazing if there was a way to, um, require that some kind of disaster relief plan is incorporated for any future disasters in these kind of developments that are, we're expecting, um, you know, more at-risk residents to be living at. Um, so that's my question. What kind of limitations do we have or is that something that somehow can be included when we're making these kind of decisions?
Yeah, let me just interject quickly and then Steph, you can answer. But I believe, um, we run into this quite a bit, Commissioner Braxton, just on things, uh, whether it be affordable housing or site, more things that are, uh, done during site plan. And we try to get as much information as we can, but we really can't be a condition of the zoning decisions made. So I think some of the things you're asking for are kind of outside of the realm of what can inform our decision on whether to approve the zoning or not. So I think, um, I'll let staff answer, but yes, that is not kind of in the sphere of typical things we would add, say as a conditional overlay that would be allowed. And I think some of this was, um, and I'm about ready to go through my orientation again, that the law department kind of lays out is what is, what we can and can't approve within our, um, our area of responsibility. But Steph, do you want to comment on that in the last minute we have?
Uh, yes Chair. I believe you're correct that the, um, the items like disaster relief plan or some of those things that I heard about, um, requiring affordable housing or potentially setting aside the, the wildflower meadow, those things wouldn't specifically, and I don't believe they're allowed to be a condition of zoning. Um, things that you can do in your conditional overlay would be to put a unit cap on the, the property. I know that that was a concern, um, from one of the commissioners. Kind of tied to the, the housing question, but while we couldn't require anything with affordable housing, you can put a unit cap. Um, you can require, um, a vegetative buffer along, you know, you'd say the, the north side or the east side or west side of the property at X amount of feet. But we can't go into specifics about what's in that vegetative buffer or things that are designed within that space. Um, but as far as the disaster relief plan, that is not something that we could include in the conditional overlay.
Thank you. And, uh, I, this is a learning process, Commissioners that are new. I, many times in my first years here was wanting more and more information and it, sometimes it's just not, they just don't have it because they're not, they don't, they're not required to. And it's frustrating sometimes, but that's what we have to work with. Um, so let's see, I've got room for some more questions. Commissioner Azar?
Thank you Chair. Um, I think the applicant or, um, folks working on it can help me understand. So just to get clarity on the question between MF3 versus MF4, I think I heard that using MF3 could potentially work out, but I'm not sure if there's details available about that. Can you please speak to the fact? Has, have you all done a precise sort of site layout to understand whether MF3 or MF4 will allow you to build to the level where you want to build and to serve the units, serve the people and create the units that you want?
Walter, I'm going to defer to Connor. We do have done a preliminary site plan, but I think there aren't enough, that's a nail down and that, I would have a precise answer, but maybe Connor can go over that again.
Hi, uh, Commissioners, this is Connor Kenny. Um, the, uh, the conceptual architecture site design is not quite done. So, um, you know, affordability unlocked, uh, it does reduce site, uh, setbacks, it eliminates compatibility. I think there was a desire to maybe keep it at MF4 to be a little bit more, you know, kind of honest and predictable about where things were going. We certainly wouldn't, uh, aren't planning on using the, the height increases under affordability unlocked. Uh, so the entitlements and setbacks of MF4 indicate, uh, where, uh, the building will be. Uh, we believe it's possible under, under MF3, certainly we meet the, the affordability requirements. Uh, it just hasn't been verified yet. And, um, I think our, our preference would be to, uh, to, to keep it at MF4 to, to council so that everything can be verified before, uh, we, we kind of make a final call on that. Um, but of course, it's your prerogative.
And Mr. Kenny, can you please also, um, a follow-up question is, would you have more clarity on whether MF3 could work by the time you get to council?
I'm sorry, the computer telling me I was no longer muted, cut you off. Uh, Commissioners, could you repeat your question?
Sure. Uh, my question was essentially, um, if, if I'm hearing correctly, would you all have the ability to understand if MF3 works by the time you get to council? So you would have more certainty on what is actually required by the time you get to council for a vote?
Yes, that's our expectation, yes.
Okay, and, and so essentially if we were to, uh, provide MF4 right now, it would give the flexibility that you need in order to have more clarity by the time you get to council. So I'm just trying to think too. I don't want us to go with MF3 and then for you to get stuck in that box and then not have the ability to go back or without sort of going through the process again, and I wouldn't want that. So just to clearly understand the need for going with MF4. And I guess if you can just confirm what I'm saying makes sense.
Uh, yeah, it absolutely makes sense. Uh, MF4 is the predictable zoning that is, uh, what the concept is here and, and we're just not fully done with an affordability unlocked analysis.
And Mr. Moreau, I feel like I just heard you speak on this as well? Yes, I agree. Thank you Commissioner. We would greatly ask to still have MF4 so we can absolutely be sure that MF3 is okay when we get to council.
Thank you, that's great.
Okay, uh, two more spots for Commissioners with questions. Commissioner Conley?
Uh, my question is for Walter Moreau. And it is, uh, recently, uh, other foundation communities' properties that, that, uh, were open, I think, I'm thinking specifically of the, the Waterloo Terrace. Uh, I read that there was a significant waitlist for the property. And I was wondering if you could, uh, tell me a little bit more about, about the waitlist. How, how large of a waitlist is it? What kind of waitlist do you guys have on your other properties? And, uh, who, who is on that waitlist? Who are the people that are waiting?
Yeah, we, we just started, uh, leasing Waterloo Terrace and we had over 1,300 people, um, expressed interest in wanting to apply to live there. We only have 132 apartments, almost 10 applicants per apartment. Um, that community is a little different from Parker because it's not designed for single adults, um, many of whom are homeless. And Parker Lane is more designed for families. We generally keep a waitlist property by property by property, um, because the managers and the people know, do we, what is available? But most of the properties have a, a lengthy waitlist, um, you know, that goes on for months.
Um, also, if, um, sorry, uh, one more question. If I, if I, um, if I'm correct in this, I believe that, uh, folks that live in foundation communities apartments tend to be, uh, heavy users of public transit. Is that not, is that not correct? Do you have any, uh, information on that?
Um, that's a great question and we don't have a detailed study. Um, but public transit access is really, we try to locate as much as we can near transit. I will be honest, actually a lot of our families with kids have a car because it's still, uh, valuable to have, to get around with kids to, uh, school and work and everything else. Um, but they might not be a car that's always reliable and having the public transit, um, is ideal.
And, and oftentimes it's, it's one vehicle for, for the entire family, um, with multiple people going to different places to work. So you have, uh, a tendency to rely on transit pretty frequently even when there's car ownership. Wouldn't, would, would you say that that's correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And we have made sure in the site plan that we have adequate parking for, uh, need.
Awesome, thank you. That's it, that's my only question.
All right, uh, I'm going to go and take the last slide here. I have a few questions. And, um, the first one I have is, uh, we heard a lot from the, those opposed that they really wanted this to become, remain a civic space. And they're looking for, I guess, some kind of, um, relationship with the city and the property owner to develop a rec center or something like that. Could I hear from staff? I mean, how would that actually happen? Are there examples where the city is, uh, leased or, or bought property from property owners like this and, and created, um, I guess, park space and recreation areas, uh, more recently? And, and what, uh, as far as, uh, but I, I would imagine that would have to be budgeted and then, uh, there would be a long process. But could you speak to maybe some examples how that, where that's occurred in the city?
Chair, this is Kate Clark with Housing and Planning. I am not aware of agreements that have occurred in relationships to zoning cases, um, that have done that. Uh, I do know that I have had zone, zoning cases where the applicant has, um, proceeded with a private restrictive covenant with a, a party to provide those things that can't be added in a conditional overlay or a public RC. Um, but I don't have the information as far as what that process would look like for, um, a public, uh, public space to be done through the city in partnership with the, the community for that. It's possible that Maureen, um, with the neighborhood planning, um, under the neighborhood plan case may have additional information.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said who might have more information?
That, that, this is Maureen, um, Housing and Planning, Maureen Meredith. No, I, I do not have any additional information on that. I don't remember with any plan amendment case, um, since the plan amendment cases are just flum changes, um, that I, those details wouldn't have gone through my case. And, and I don't recall any.
Okay, all right. And, and so I noticed on the, um, the flum that a number of these properties were, uh, withdrawn from the in, in, uh, neighborhood plan. What, can you explain, uh, why that was? Um, there's, just on the flum, there's just a big white area.
Uh, yes, Maureen Meredith, Housing and Planning, um, Yes, Maureen Meredith, Housing and Planning. My memory is during the planning process, those properties were removed from the future land use map with the intent that they would be revisited at a later time, which never happened. So they remained unflummed.
Okay. And then lastly, and this is probably maybe a question for Mr. Kenny, I was just wondering, given the density, the, the units that are proposed, relation, in relation to the acres of the site, what are we kind of looking at as far as an MF equivalency when you look at units per acre? Is it more like an MF2 or 1 or?
Commissioner, I apologize, I don't have that calculation on hand. I, I think it probably exceeds an MF2. If, if I had to ballpark it right now, I would, I would say it's probably an MF3.
Okay.
If I might add too, it, we're, the apartments we're building are very large unit sizes, 80% two and three bedroom. So it's, it's not as easy as a, a unit per acre comparison.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more questions and that wraps up our eight slots.
Commissioner, I do have an answer for you on that question. We're looking at probably 17 units or acre, per acre or so, which is actually, yeah, right at about a little under MF2.
Okay.
And that's thanks to the, the large amount of preserved open space on the, on the site. So yeah, you're right, less than MF2.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're done with the Q and A's, so do any commissioners have a motion? Commissioners Zar.
Thank you Chair. So I'm going to make a motion that we move with the applicant request. And so essentially, I'm asking for a recommendation of F4 NP for, for B2 and then a plan amendment of civic to multifamily land use for B1.
All right, do I have a second? I'm sorry, I'm, and I put my head down, I think it was Commissioner Conley that raised her hand first for the second, okay? Do you want to speak to your motion, Commissioner Zar?
Thank you Chair. I think, you know, we've had a pretty hefty conversation here. I, I think a lot of folks here agree that, one, you know, the work the foundation community is, is doing is critical, not just from the perspective of the providing affordable housing, but also the kind of services that they're providing within the context of the existing neighborhood. And I think, you know, considering that we want to support that affordable housing mission and want to make sure that we allow them to build the affordable housing that they need here and also secure the federal funding that they're getting, I, I think it's good to sort of move forward with, of course, you know, the overall requests. And then I guess I want to speak specifically to the MF4 need. I think I'm hearing that there may be a possibility, but there's no certainty. So I just want to be certain as they go to council to go with MF4 so that they have the ability to go back, check and see if MF3 would work or not. And so by the time they get to council, council could very well move the zoning to MF3 and go with that recommendation, just then knowing that there would be more knowledge and clarity at that time whether MF3 will allow them to do the work that they're trying to do here. So I don't want us to become a hindrance by going with MF3 and then being stuck when going to council with a recommendation that might not work. And that is why I'm making a motion for MF4 to support their affordable housing work and also to ensure that we can continue this, this streamlined process and give council the ability to make the decision that makes best sense. Thank you.
Okay, and just let me, Commissioner Cox, I saw your hand, but let me just explain for the new folks. We, you have a main motion, which we just heard from Commissioner Zar, he got three minutes. Then we have a primary speaker, member that would speak against, has three minutes. And then after that, we have members for and against. And you have two minutes each and there's a total of three for and three against. So, I don't know if I explained that very well, but, so the next speaker that I'm, do we have any speakers against? I don't know if that's Commissioner Cox, were you speaking against a motion?
Well, what are the, what are the rules regarding substitute motions or amendments or?
So, an amendment would be something that you're not, it's not contrary or in opposition, it's just adding to and in, you know, in line with the motion. Substitute is, is, it stands on its own, it's a different, you know, usually.
Am I able to, to make a substitute motion at this time or is that?
You can, you can make your substitute and we would see if you have a second.
Okay, well, if that, if that's the, if it's the time to do that, I, I would offer a substitute motion that we approve staff's recommendation because of everything that we heard, but also with conditions attached to it that, that attempt to keep this within the, the bounds of what foundation communities has proposed. So a cap of, I guess, 135 units and I would even propose that the conditional, conditional overlay or whatever, on not removing any of the heritage trees on the site to enable and guarantee that green space that foundation communities has committed to also be part of the condition of the zoning. And I can speak to that if, if, if there's a second.
I guess I need a, so what I'm hearing is, well, first of all, do we have a second? I, okay, Commissioner, Ms. Toller, we have a second, but I need, on the, be clear on the motion here, you, so I guess B1, the neighborhood plan amendment, you're, it would, we're considering that also, you're good with that?
Yes.
So this would be on B2, the substitute is M3 with a cap of 135 units and, and that would be a conditional overlay and also, which I need staff to, I'm not sure about this, whether or not we can put in there a CO with, you know, on the heritage trees. So I would have to hear from staff on whether or not that's allowed.
Chair, this is Kate Clark. I don't believe that we can CO the heritage trees because it's part of the environmental, part of the land development. However, I am asking now and I hope to get clarification shortly.
Would the heritage trees fall under the required development ordinances anyway?
Yes, it would. And so that's why I don't believe we can condition, make it a condition of zoning because we don't typically condition things that are required by code.
Thank you. What about Commissioner, on your substitute, if we take that conditional overlay to be, I believe the language that was provided earlier was the vegetative buffer?
I don't know if it's right, Chair, is, is this okay discussion? I don't want to put us out of order like I usually do.
So, Commissioner, yeah, we're out of order here, so go ahead. Restate your, your motion and let's, we've got a second, but I want to restate your motion for the, for the body.
Maybe, maybe this will satisfy staff, hopefully. So, so my motion is to approve the staff recommendation of MF3 with, with conditions, with a conditional overlay or whatever you want to call it, of a cap of 135 units and a buffer space that encompasses the heritage trees on the site?
Commissioner, I believe that, go ahead Chair.
No, I was just going to say, and if staff has other ways we can do this, I'm open for suggestions.
I believe the way that a vegetative buffer conditional overlay would work is you have to specify a distance on a particular side. So it would be, I'm not sure which side they are planning to put their potential wildflower area, but it would.
I believe that was on the Parker Lane side. If, when they looked at their, when their, their initial first pass at what they were trying to lay out and sketch out for us that you guys provided in the supplementals. So it's on the, the street facing side.
Chair, Chairman Shaw, i- is it okay if I ask the developer's engineer a question about the buffer?
Yeah, no, I'm going to say we need to move on. I mean, we, this is, I think, going to take quite a bit of, we'd have to move out and go back into questions and answers. So, we're kind of beyond that now. So I guess, I'm, what I have here that I know is within our realm is the 135, you know, CO capping the units. So, can we, can we go with that is our, with the MF3 with cap on the units? Is the motion?
Yeah, it, did I hear from staff correctly that, that they, that they're just completely disallowed from removing the heritage trees to begin with? And, and so that's why the heritage tree conditional, condition to the, the zoning approval is not applicable? Did we get an answer on that?
Yeah, so it, sorry Chair, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm, I'm going to hear your explanation is what we need, thanks.
Commissioner, it's not that they are not allowed to remove them, it's just that the city has the heritage tree ordinance, which they would be required to follow during their site planning process. There are ways that heritage trees can be removed, but there are specific reviews that go along with that process. And we don't condition the requirement to keep the heritage trees because that is covered under that, the heritage tree ordinance on the ways that they can and cannot be removed on site during the site planning process.
So I think these are some of the site plan issues we run into and if we can keep it in the realm of planning commission. So a buffer would be a certain number of feet from the property line, no development, things like that, but we would need to recommend that now with, you know, without Q and A.
I'll, I'll just, I'll just, the substitute motion will just have the 135 unit cap and then, so we can move on, I'll offer a discussion on that.
Okay, so we have a, still a, a motion by Commissioner Cox for the MF3 with the cap of, CO with the cap of 135 units and, and then, so we have a second by Commissioner Moos Toller. And so now, moving into the discussion, do you want to speak to your motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, just real quick, the, the reason for my substitute motion is, you know, we're, we're changing the zoning on this property to something that could potentially be extremely valuable to developers. And while we cannot require that foundation communities actually go through with their proposal, I think we need, we, the, I get the sense that, that this is a desirable zoning change for some on this commission because of foundation communities, because of the services they're providing, because of the commitments that they're making. I know me personally, I, I would probably vote differently if it was, if it was something different. And so the point of this is not necessarily because I'm against units or because I want to hinder this, this development, it's specifically because I want to see the foundation communities' development happen and make sure that that's the only thing that can happen rather than the church just deciding to sell this for millions and millions of dollars since it's MF4 and, and could, could rake in a bunch of cash and then we end up getting something that isn't something that we had discussed and what, something that the community had not heard of.
Okay, do we have a Commissioner speaking against? Commissioner Conley first, yep.
I, I think that, you know, anyone who's aware of foundation communities' track record, they are absolutely committed to trying to find the best way to provide high-quality spaces for their families and to do so in a way that's affordable and that makes sense. For me to put this overlay, I mean, and foundation communities is, has also a proven track record of being permanent owners and holding on to their, to their, to their properties. So for me to add some kind of conditional overlay is tantamount to saying that, you know, we think that we don't trust foundation communities or the church to sort of make the choice here and to live up to their commitments to the community, which I just don't believe foundation communities has that kind of track record. So I don't think it merits this kind of extra conditions. And when you have a project like this, where you're getting so much real tangible value and 100% income restricted units, it just seems to me that we should try our, our absolute best to sort of make life easier and simpler for the folks who are trying to make this possible, which is a very difficult kind of development to, to pull off in Austin at this point.
Okay, do we have a member speaking for this motion? Commissioner Yanis Polito, I saw your hand first.
Sure, I'll be brief. I definitely don't want to constrain foundation communities in this project, but I definitely appreciate the constraint, just because it, to me, I see it less of an issue of trust for, for foundation communities' reputation and more an issue of uncertainty in the world we're in and, and wanting to be moderate. Also because I have, I'm still educating myself on the way that affordability unlocked intersects with compatibility when it has to do with certain, when we deal with certain green space issues like the heritage tree ordinance. And so I know it's not designed to erode those things necessarily, but that there are, I think, I have a lot of concerns about green space and impervious cover in this area for heat and all kinds of climate reasons. So I think this is a, a helpful amendment.
All right, so, member speaking against, two minutes. Commissioner Zar.
Thank you Chair. So, I think I'm going to understand the need for having this cap, right? So we're, the only thing that this substitute is doing is that it's putting a cap of 135 units. And I think what I'm hearing is that the, that the issue is not what foundation communities is doing, the issue is that somebody else will swoop in, buy the property and do something else. I think the church, you know, we heard from the leaders of the church that they were very clear in saying that they have gone through a long process of doing a mission-driven search for the right partner to take over this property and do live through those values and create what is being created. So I, I think we're saying that, okay fine, we trust foundation communities, are we saying we don't trust the church leaders who've been very clear in saying that they, this is part of their mission and that is why they're doing this work and that is why they struck up this partnership with foundation communities. So, I think from my perspective, I just want to make sure that, one, we're giving folks the flexibility that they need to do the work that they need to do. And I think going with the MF4 allowance that was part of my main motion was essentially that it would give them the flexibility that they need. This is like saying, oh, if somehow there's funding or some flexibility to go to 136 affordable units, well, we don't want that extra unit. Or if it goes to 190 units, we don't want that extra 40 units or whatever it is. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but essentially, there should be flexibility in the process where if somebody wants to provide more than 135 units, they should be able to provide more than 135 affordable units. I'm not sure why we would cap the number of affordable units that a trusted community partner can provide with a trusted partner in the neighborhood that is working to make sure that they're moving over their property and doing something good by the community that they live in. So that's all I will say and I would say that I trust all the partners here and I think the base motion lives up to that trust. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, a slot for a member speaking for, two-minute slot. Commissioner Moos Toller.
Sorry, a background noise, I needed to close the door. I concur with all the points from the other folks who were saying, one, it, it's not done until it's done and we don't want to open up a possibility that for whatever reason, unpredictable to us or the current intent, it doesn't happen and then we open up this area to something that is not appropriate. Two, I agree with the, the green space concerns and the environmental concerns. And three, because we did have a number of neighborhood groups that spoke in opposition and listed out their concerns, I want this project to be successful and I want the, the planning commission and the project moving forward to be able to demonstrate that they listen to the neighborhoods and what their concerns were and try to work with, within what was reasonable to maintain the project, to still make it happen and let it be more, I'd like to get a pathway for more buy-in from more residents of the neighborhood because they feel like their voices were heard also in what they needed to allow this to come into the community. Thanks.
Okay, do we have a member speaking against this motion? Do we have a member speaking against this motion? Commissioner Schneider?
I guess I'd like to speak neutral on it. I, I think we're often in the position of taking a leap of faith with a developer who says that they're going to do something, intends to do something, but with always the risk in the background that something may change and that, and the property that we heard about, that we believed in, that was going to do all these great things for the community, doesn't end up happening. The difference in this case is we're often hearing from businesses, from for-profit businesses. Nothing wrong with that. We need them to build housing. But in this case, we've got two parties who are both driven by mission. And I initially was supportive of staff recommendations. But when I heard Commissioner Azar's arguments about giving Foundation Communities and the Methodist Church this additional flexibility, it really rang true with me. So while I, I understand the motives behind wanting to rope them in a little, I feel like we, there is such trust, deserved trust with both of these partners that the original motion provides some flexibility that we wouldn't normally give to a developer. But we can count on these parties living up to their, maybe not the exact details, but certainly the spirit of what they're proposing.
Okay, so that wraps up the debate. And I want to remind folks, just so we get this straight, you have the choice to vote for, against, or abstain. So oftentimes we'll hear us say, speak neutrally. But when it comes to voting, your yellow is that you're abstaining from the vote. So just to make that clear. So on the substitute motion, and that was by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Muschdoller, for, it was for the B1, which was approving the NFPA from civic to multifamily. And on B2, staff recommendation with an addition of a CO to cap the unit count at 135 units. So that is the motion before us. Those voting in favor, please show me your green cards. And give me a second to count. One, two, three. I'm just looking at green right now. Sorry that, so I got green. One, two, three, four. And then those against, please show your red. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine against.
Chair, Commissioner Lee's on Andrew Vera.
Yes.
If we could do the four vote again.
Okay.
I was missing the number four.
Yeah, let's do, those in favor, please raise your green objects. One, two, three. I'm seeing three. Yes, three. And then those against, one more time, just to verify. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And then those abstaining? Okay. Yes, we're down one. All right, thank you. So that motion fails. So we're off, back to the motion that we had by Commissioner Azar, seconded by Commissioner Conley, which was to approve the applicant's request for B1 and B2. And that would be neighborhood plan civic, on B1, civic to multifamily. And under B2, that's SF3 NP to MF4 NP. Is that correct? Okay. So we have, let's go ahead and take a vote on this motion. Oh, wait, we did not finish our debate. Sorry. Yes, we jumped right into a substitute. Let's go ahead now. Commissioner Azar, I can't recall if you spoke to your motion.
I had already said my motion.
You did, okay. We were on those speaking against. Do we have anybody speaking against this motion? Anyone want to speak for? I see Commissioner Cox with his hand up first.
I actually was, was more neutral. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this because I want to see it move forward, even though I made a substitute motion. But I just wanted to make the point that regulating development based on trust is a very risky thing to do. And I think it's risky for this commission to decide how to grant zoning based on the level of personal trust you have with who is requesting that zoning. We, we need to, we need to find a standard that is irrespective of the applicant when it comes to zoning and try to apply that. And, and, and so I, I want to see this move forward because I think it's a great project. I just think that it's awfully risky to do that. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, another chance for anyone speaking against? Against? No? Okay, last, this is tough because we got.
I, I speak neutrally. Are you going to do?
Yeah, go ahead and speak neutrally and then we'll do the last. Commissioner Conley can speak for the motion. So go ahead and speak neutrally.
Thank you. So I am very supportive of the wraparound services and long-term affordability that I think many other commissioners on this, on this board are also supportive of. I, I have concerns. First of all, I think it's, it's really important for us to have somebody on staff, if not among applicants who are using the low-income housing tax credits to be able to speak to fair housing law. Because the concern that was brought up is about saturation. It's about concentration of low-income housing in particular areas of town. And I'm not saying that this necessarily violates that, but there is a very real set of reasons that we talk about why affordable housing needs to be distributed and really also why a mix of multifamily and other types of uses are so important. It's not about limiting apartment dwellers. It's about ensuring that people have the basics for quality of life. And as we increase density in areas, we really need to talk about adequate green space. We need to talk about emergency resources. This place needs to be prepared to be a resilience hub. Because as a church site, as a civic use, this would be the designated area. And it's a 40-minute walk on a good day, not too hot, not too cold, roads not closed, to get to Linder Elementary from this area, which would probably be the next closest designated resilience hub. So this area is going to have to be ready for that because I, I know the learning centers in Foundation Communities well. I've worked with and been close to and stayed over at many Foundation Communities apartments. They serve a huge demand within the complex. So in, in terms of being a community-facing center, it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work. And I'm confident that, that Foundation Communities will work with the community to, the surrounding community to figure this out. But that green space becomes even more important when you have more people. It becomes more important when you have more flooding, more heat, which we're going to have all of those things. So I do think, you know, I hope all of those will be taken into consideration. I do support the project, but that's why I'm neutral. And I think MF4, we need to be careful about precedent in addition to, you know, not just the individual site, but what happens around it. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Conley, do you want to speak in favor?
Yes, and I'll try to be brief. You know, as, during, i- i- in the work that I do as a community organizer during the storm, we were actively part of the disaster relief. And I was working with and accompanying families who were in Foundation Communities apartments as well as families and renters who were in a number of other properties throughout the city. And while I, the families in the Foundation Communities apartments suffered as everyone else did in this city, they suffered quite a bit. They had loss of power and stuff. They were in general back on their feet, back in adequate housing and in, in, in good shape. And their needs were met. They were helped, they, they received much more help accessing resources in the city than the renters in all of the other naturally occurring affordable units who are to this day in some of those apartments, don't have adequate water pressure and many of those apartments are still not livable. So the difference in service was striking. And I think that is one of the key things that's worth noting is that, you know, the, the, you know, I don't think that if Foundation Communities were to add a couple of units, as Avaz said, over a cap of what they're currently proposing, which I don't necessarily, I don't believe they will. I don't believe that that's what the church would, would agree to. But if they were to, I don't see that that would be a violation of trust or, you know, an act of harm. All they would be doing is, is creating a few more units to help house people. I also want to point out that the original fair, the original Housing First model was a model where you had about 20%, no more than 20% of the units were dedicated to PSH, to permanent supportive housing. So this is actually one of the very few developments where you actually have a real Housing First type approach. And it's very hard to get something like that in Austin. But I'm a big proponent of densifying West Austin as well. And I would like to see more developments like this in other high-opportunity parts of the city. We need to distribute that. I absolutely propose that.
Okay. We do have a slot for anyone that speaks, wants to speak in opposition to this motion. Anyone? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead. And this is the, I'll repeat it one more time. B1 and B2 applicant's request. Motion by Commissioner Azar, seconded by Commissioner Conley. Those in favor, please raise your green cards. So I have 11 speaking in favor. Those against? Do we have any against? All right. Abstaining? We have one. Okay, so 11 to one. So that's B1 and B2. As, as, as presented by, the motion as presented passes. Okay, let's, I'm looking at my list here. That was, that was very good. I think we got introduced to a lot of different elements of, of debate. I really, that was good. And I appreciate all the different viewpoints from everyone.